...Commissioner's Court for May the 8th is called to order. We'll start with the invocation followed by the pledge. Veronica, would you do the honors, please?
Yes, sir. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you and praise you for all the wonderful things that you provide for us. We just ask that you be with our military. We just ask that you be with each and everyone that is here in this court today. We ask that you especially be with our court members so they can make good decisions for our county. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) Honored the Texas flag. Our pledged allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. (Inaudible)
Holy cow. Must have asbestos in it.
Huh?
Must have asbestos in it. As always, please turn off your cell phones and pagers except for emergency personnel. And with that, we'll go to number three, acknowledged candidates for successful completion of Emerging Leaders Academy. Ms. Bailey, good morning.
Yes, gentlemen, these, we have 21 who enrolled and 21 who completed the program. So, we're very excited about that. The Emerging Leaders is a new program that we started. It's a four-class program with classes that include introduction to policies, public service with values, leading without authority, and then how they should develop for their future. So, they attended four all-day classes in order to graduate and complete this program. It's a program for non-management employees who may have the propensity or the opportunity to come into management at some point in time.
Great. And we'd love to hear from each one of them when they come forward if you want to say something. We got Noah and Yan and two trying to leave. So, if you care to make a comment, we would love to hear from you, particularly if this is of value to you or any question that arose from the program. So...
We do have one who's not here, Elizabeth Lopez. She didn't have access to it, so I'll make sure we remember.
Okay. Ms. Lopez? Good morning. So...
David Kane.
David.
Tell a joke or anecdotal story.
No, just a pleasure to work for the county.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, stay up here longer then.
Laura Casades.
Are you going to be Ms. Civil today or are you going to be Ms. Criminal?
Sing a song if you want to.
No, thank you.
Beach, nothing.
No, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good morning.
Little song, motto.
Bracy Corales.
No, just because all of them are shy doesn't mean you have to be.
She's not shy.
Sarah Pott.
I'm just grateful to have the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara DeWitt.
Can you say something, Creators?
Who dat?
She said who dat.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Speech.
Speech.
I would like to thank Midland County for the opportunities that they give us. It was a great class. Bailey did a great job, and I just look forward to many more years Lord willing with county. It's a pleasure to work for the county. Thank you.
She set the bar kind of high. Valerie Macklin.
Okay, Valerie.
I too want to thank the county for setting up classes like this to educate us and keep us true to the vision of the county. And I'm proud to be an employee of the county, and I just want to thank you, Bailey, for putting up with us. And thank you.
Well said. Thank you.
Joseph Pionas.
What was something funny that happened in the classroom?
A lot, yes, sir. They both took a bite off my mouth, I mean.
Is that right?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to thank Mr. T for giving me this opportunity to take this class.
Oh, nice.
And I hope to have many more years with the Midland County Library.
Thank you.
Valerie Rivera. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would like to thank Midland County for the opportunities that they give us. It was a great class. Bailey did a great job, and I just look forward to many more years Lord willing with county. It's a pleasure to work for the county. Thank you.
She set the bar kind of high. Valerie Macklin.
Okay, Valerie.
I too want to thank the county for setting up classes like this to educate us and keep us true to the vision of the county. And I'm proud to be an employee of the county, and I just want to thank you, Bailey, for putting up with us. And thank you.
Well said. Thank you.
Joseph Pionas.
Thank you, sir.
What was something funny that happened in the classroom?
A lot, yes, sir. They both took a bite off my mouth, I mean.
Is that right?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. T for giving me this opportunity to take this class.
Oh, nice.
And I hope to have many more years with the Midland County Library.
Thank you.
Valerie Rivera. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and for Missy too. She was a wonderful instructor for sharing her knowledge with us.
Cool. Thank you. Yeah.
Judy Stewart. If you wanted to sing a song, I'd sing a song. Margarita Strahan. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Bailey. Thank you all, and thank you to my bosses that are here for support.
See ya.
Jenny Swing. I don't think I saw her either. Melissa Rassiliyan. Did I say her name? Missy, okay, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Now, you can say something if you'd like.
No, I'm going to.
Connie Ward. And last but not least, she'll give a valid decree speech. Not so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You wanted to sing a song, I said no. Margarita Strahan. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Bailey. Thank you all, and thank you to my bosses that are here for support.
See ya.
Jenny Swing. I don't think I saw her either. Melissa Rassiliyan. Did I say her name? Missy, okay, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Now, you can say something if you'd like.
No, I'm going to.
Connie Ward. And last but not least, she'll give a valid decree speech. Not so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Group photo, you get everybody.
Thanks, Bailey.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Krista.
Krista. That gentleman got his passport. Finally. Way to go. You got your passport. You got it in county. The guy was 85 years old. Come on down. Come on, come on. Who dat? Come on down here. Guy 85 years old and had not traveled outside the U.S.
Mark, stand up. Can you get us over there? Yeah, I got y'all. One, two, three. One more.
Cheese.
Good job. Thank you all very much. So, enjoy it. Nice feed. He had never traveled outside the U.S. Passport office. Murdered cable, his driver's license doesn't match the person, so they held him. And we had to write you, but she took care of it, came out, great deal. He's late to his trip, but he got to go. Yeah, one of those deals, barn on a ranch. Okay, we need a motion to acknowledge, please.
Motion to acknowledge?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Any post same sign, motion passes. Number four, acknowledged continuing hours and recertification for Midland County HR Resources Director. You've been recertified now.
I have.
Perfect.
We have to get 60 hours of continuing education or with volunteering, or I get credit for teaching and creating the management program and the Emerging Leaders Program. So, you have copies of my certificates for the classes activity.
Fantastic, Bailey. Nice job. Any questions, Bailey, or a motion to acknowledge?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign, motion passes. Number five, discuss take action on stipend received from Public Workers Compensation Program. Bailey?
Yes, sir. We get this twice a year for participating in their safety and wellness program that they have. We participated again. This is for the spring 2017 program. We had roughly about 100 employees participate.
Seventeen hundred dollars this time.
It is, every, twice a year.
Good. Motion to acknowledge? Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign, motion passes. A question, that'll go in the general fund.
It's always gone into the wellness line, yeah. Yeah.
That's my question, is it going to go to the wellness line or you going to put it in the general fund?
It's either, it's up to the court on where that one goes to.
I would hope it goes to wellness.
Okay.
But my colleagues may have a different view. It's fine. Okay. All right, number six, discuss take action on replat of Bates Estate, Section 2 of 81.67, Acres Antelope 106, Bates Airport, Midland County, Texas. Commissioner?
Looks fine to me.
Okay.
Dale, Felipe, let's see.
Okay, roads meet, emergency management. Is that right?
Yes.
Scott, I'd never heard of Bates Airport. Is it actually a landing strip there?
Used to be.
Used to be?
Yeah.
It could be a crash site for the old airfield, for the WWII airfield.
Really? We could name it the Donnelly.
Oh, my gosh. We'll take a recess for a little bit. Commissioner, for the record, we've had this one several times. Is this, for purposes of the minute, this replat, the final proper adjusted replat?
As far as I know.
Okay, so if you'd let the minute show that this is the final agreed replat, because I think there's at least four other ones out there. Okay? So, Commissioner Ramsey, you made a motion?
I would make the motion to accept the final replat of Bates Estate.
Okay. Second. Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign, motion passes. Number seven, acknowledged report from Warrant Services. Scott, come on out.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That's just the report for the first quarter, January, February, March of 2016, or correction, 2017. Also, in that time, we've also got a monthly report for April. For the first three months of the year, we brought in between our office, off-site collections, and arrests, warrants, arrests cleared, we brought in $556,678.66. You'll have the chart, and we're down a little over $5,000 from the same time last year. We've been having, you know, pretty good fluctuation here in the last couple of months. For the month of April, we collected a total of $149,000. We received 321 new warrants. We cleared 247. And that showed us an increase, total overall increase of $25,000 for the same time last year. I just wanted to give you all an update as to what we've been doing over there and let you all know what was going on.
Okay. Awesome. Questions? Have you gotten your tasers yet?
Yes, sir, we do have them.
Yeah, I'm used to my own.
No, not yet. I'm having, I need a volunteer.
Now, accepting volunteers. Ray, you want to do it? Yeah.
Thank you. Before I issue them to the investigators, we're going to, I need to get them into an update class for the tapes.
Okay, well, we got Emerging Leaders, surely that's part of the program.
Yes, sir, we do have them in. Thank you again for that.
Okay. All right.
If he gets me to go out to the Alice Cooper setup again.
I didn't know you were part of the group, Dale. Okay, good report. Do we have a motion or conversation about acknowledgement?
Motion to acknowledge?
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign, motion passes. Justin, what's the feedback we're getting in this thing? Number eight, discuss take action on court fees for county and district clerk's office. Madam Clerk?
Good morning. Yes, these are the fees for April of 2017 for the county and the district clerk's office.
Motion to acknowledge?
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign, motion passes. Allison, while you're standing there, you went to co-file last week.
Yes.
Why don't you tell us?
Oh, it was wonderful. The process is amazing, what care they take in the documents to remove all that tape that the clerks in the past thought was a good idea to save those documents. They painstakingly pull that off, and then they treat the documents and bind them in special binders very...
So, you're pretty satisfied with how they go about it?
Oh, yes, they're, yes.
Okay. You didn't happen to see our book number one being done, did you?
Yeah, well, I did see it, yes. They're working on it.
Well, thank you for going in.
Sure, thank you.
You bet. Yes, we did. So, number nine, discuss take action authorizing county judge sign Texas Commission on the Arts Grant Agreement for the Midland County Public Libraries. Mr. T?
Judge Commissioners, this is something we work with, the Texas Commission on the Arts will reimburse up to a half sometimes for performers that are on their slate. And so, we've identified some that we want to bring out in the next year, and I just need the judge to sign that so we can move those applications forward.
Okay.
Motion to approve that request?
Okay, and for the record, I think Commissioner Ramsey, you're abstaining?
That's correct.
All right. So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Are you on that, Scott?
No, my wife is. It's on Humanities Texas.
Yeah. Good deal.
So, the vote was three. So, thank you. Number 10, discuss take action authorizing county judge sign Humanities Texas, we, excuse me, Texas Humanities Program Evaluation and Grant Reimbursement, and I assume you will be abstaining again.
That's correct.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Ramsey is a champion also on the foundation board. We had Riders of the Orphan Train, something that Commissioner Prude actually brought to us, and a portion of that is reimbursable through Humanities Texas. We've expended all of the, paid off all the invoices, but we are eligible for reimbursement from Humanities Texas. I just need the judge's signature.
Motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign, motion passes. Number 11, discuss take action authorizing county judge sign collaborative agreement with West Texas Food Bank, Midland County Public Libraries. Now, this is puzzling.
This is new.
Yeah.
We've partnered with West Texas Food Bank for several years on some food drives. They have summer feeding stations for kids, and in the last two years, the numbers of Texas libraries has doubled that have served as feeding stations. It's a big push with the Texas State Library and Archives Commission and the Department of Agriculture. The downtown library has made application to be a summer feeding program distributor site. The food bank's excited. We have talked to Dwayne, and we have talked to Mr. Little. They have signed off, there is no food prep onsite, so we don't need food handling license and those things. Mr. Malm has looked at the agreement. There was one small change that's not substantive. It's just the agreement being with the county versus the library. But I'm excited about the opportunity to be able to serve the demographic and provide another feeding station site for the kids this summer since it makes sense for us since we have a high, our traffic increases in the summer. That's our busy time of year, and a bulk of that is with summer reading and those kids.
Okay, you have some guests with you.
Yeah, the food bank, we have a member of the food bank here. Be glad to answer any questions or concerns that you all have.
John, when you have researched this, the other towns that have done, or other libraries have done this, do you have any anecdotal stories or results about what has happened in those other places?
No, sir, I don't have anything specific, just that all of it's been very positive. Yeah, come forward if you want to.
We don't currently have a library that's one of ours.
Okay, you need to start with your name and where you live, please.
Kelly Durden, and I live in Odessa.
Okay, where in Odessa, though?
My address?
Yes, please.
1205 Santa Rosa, Odessa, Texas, 79763.
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
We don't currently have a library as a feeding site, but we have the Boys and Girls Clubs and also some low-income apartments. So, I would kind of compare what we're doing at the library or what we want to do at the library with some of those low-income apartments. There's a lot of traffic. In the summertime, kids aren't in school. So, what we try to do is go into those sites, different places where kids are already at. And so, we can just take that food in, feed them, let them participate in any of the activities that are going on there, and then they'll get their bellies full at the same time.
Is there a way to, is there caretaking about the health value of the food as opposed to, say, junk food or something like that?
Yes, sir. We have to follow the rules from the Texas Department of Agriculture. So, every meal that we serve will have a protein component, a fruit, a vegetable, and a grain, as well as a milk that will be served to them.
And just out of curiosity, do we have any of our local grocery stores that you're working with that, I know it's been a big issue lately across the country about taking food that's going to waste. And I know there's a lot of stuff that goes on there, but are we able to access any of that food here locally?
Not so much in this program. The food that we procure has to be very specific, and the nutritional guidelines and to contain the cost, we've got to order that in advance. Now, of course, the food bank in itself does have those arrangements with the grocery stores, and we pick up food almost every single day from the local grocery stores that's distributed out in different programs.
Right. Well, there's some amazing things going on in our country right now that help people that are hungry, so, and that's one of it is how much food we throw away.
Food waste is a hot topic right now, you're right.
It really is.
I want to thank you guys for this. I'm very excited about this Kids Cafe program. You know, I'm with the Educate Midland, and I'm also working with ABO Hanger to be able to provide some of these specifically programs like what you're offering right now, where in the summer, you know, the kids can come, they can learn, that way they don't forget what they've learned the previous year. But at the same time, as you know, once you feed them, they'll be coming back. So, this is very exciting. I'm so glad that Midland County is going to be a part of this, so, great job. Thank you so much.
I have just two quick points of clarification. West Texas doesn't have a current, we'd be the first library in West Texas. There are other sites across the state, Commissioner, and we could get you that data to show kind of, they had about 50 in 2015, and last summer, there was about 100 across Texas, but there were none in West Texas or the Permian Basin, so we would be the first.
Well, I appreciate, like Louise said, I appreciate very much y'all bringing this before.
The other, the other component of this is while it's not, a bulk of the, the, the prep happens offsite, it is our peak time, and so there is a staffing component that we have some concern. In talking with the auditor, I also need you to approve the creation of a separate line in my undesignated donations. We want to be able to have someone dedicated to this so we don't have to pull off of, the money is there in undesignated donations, but I don't have a line in that, in that line item specifically for part-time.
Okay, let's go through a couple of things. First, with the auditor, that line item has to be budgeted. Has it been budgeted?
He has budgeted some money, I believe, in books, and he's wanting to transfer that money to create, to be able to pay that position. So, the other thing that's being requested is to add a temporary position to his donation account. So, Missy has the ability to pay that individual.
And this person would be like the coordinator of the Kids Cafe program?
For the library, yeah. I mean, West Texas Food Bank obviously has their person, but yes, we need someone onsite, so we're not pulling from existing library staff that already has duties.
Absolutely, and it would be just from June through August?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Okay, a couple of things that come to mind, and these are mechanics about the program.
Yes, sir.
It's downtown only, according to the agreement.
Correct.
Is it correct? Is it every day?
Five days a week, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday?
Yes, sir.
So, you've spoken to us about changing your hours in the summertime. Does this affect it?
No, sir, will not.
Talking about a part-time person, is that 28 hours or less?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we don't get in trouble with healthcare?
Correct. Yes, all of our part-time people stay under.
Okay, and now, these are the mechanics. These kids are brought there to eat, which is a good thing, but who signs for them or who gets them there, or what is our responsibility on the liability side of, a mom says, I didn't authorize this kid to come, which has happened in another community. What, what happens then? Secondly, let's just face what it is, and we've talked about this in court before. We have had, from time to time, some not subtle homeless folks, and that's another topic. But what happens if they mix and mingle? Who is responsible for this child's safety? I guess we are. I'm saying that, Russell, jump in here.
The, I think I probably need to visit with John some more and get exact details as to how the program, how he envisions the program being operated. We're not actually going to be, I mean, are we actually running a program where we're in charge of the kids while they're there? How does this work?
No, sir, no. Just like it would be with any library program, someone is responsible for that minor.
Okay.
Okay, but it doesn't say that in the agreement. It's silent.
But I think that's also part of just our rules of the library, is I don't think we are ever, we have requirements that...
In our basic policies and procedures, whether it's summer feeding, summer reading, an exhibit, a Saturday movie, we are not liable or held accountable for the minor attending that program.
Okay, so you treat them the same way we would if they were left from a reading program?
Absolutely. You call courthouse security and sheriff's office, and someone would come over and assist us in making sure that the...
Okay, and you're serving food, it's brought in. Who disposes of the trash? Is that facilities?
Part of our janitorial request to PJIS will be, make them aware that we're doing this this summer. There'll be some added trash, but West Texas Food Bank will, they're doing multiple sites, and so they have a system in place for the distribution cleanup.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay, Dr. Turbin, where is this program physically going to be?
We're going to, we're going to do the feeding out of the kaleidoscope room, which is that small storytime room with the painted walls.
It's downtown only, according to the agreement. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is it every day?
Five days a week, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday?
Yes, sir.
So you've spoken to us about changing your hours in the summertime. Does this affect it in any way?
No, sir. Will not.
Talking about a part-time person, is that 28 hours or less?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we don't get in trouble with the healthcare?
Correct. Yes, all of our part-time people stay under.
Okay, and now, these are the mechanics. These kids are brought there to eat, which is a good thing, but who signs for them or who gets them there, or what is our responsibility on the liability side of a mom says, "I didn't authorize this kid to come," which has happened in another community. What happens then? Secondly, let's just face what it is, and we've talked about this in court before. We have had, from time to time, some not subtle homeless folks, and that's another topic, but what happens if they mix and mingle? Who is responsible for this child's safety? I guess we are. I'm saying that, Russell. Jump in here.
The -- I think I probably need to visit with John some more and get exact details as to how the program, how he envisions the program being operated. We're not actually going to be -- I mean, are we actually running a program where we're in charge of the kids while they're there? How does this work?
No, sir. No, just like it would be with any library program, someone is responsible for that minor.
Okay.
Okay, but it doesn't say that in the agreement. It's silent.
But I think that's also part of just our rules of the library, is I don't think we are ever -- we have requirements that--
In our basic policies and procedures, whether it's summer feeding, summer reading, an exhibit, a Saturday movie, we are not liable or held accountable for the minor attending that program.
Okay, so you treat them the same way we would if they were left from a reading program?
Absolutely. You call courthouse security and sheriff's office, and someone would come over and assist us in making sure that the--
Okay, and you're serving food. It's brought in. Who disposes of the trash? Is that facilities?
Part of our janitorial request to PJS will be make them aware that we're doing this this summer. There'll be some added trash, but West Texas Food Bank will also -- they're doing multiple sites, and so they have a system in place for the distribution cleanup.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay, Dr. Turman, where is this program physically going to be?
We're going to do the feeding out of the kaleidoscope room, which is that small storytime room with the painted walls. I'm not sure if y'all walked back in there or not.
It was being used when--
Okay, so there's a room on the ground floor that has some security provided. There's an additional door there, so we can monitor that better. It's just one entrance and one exit, in and out. We'll have the food distribution there, some tables to eat. Ideally, the goal is, is for parents to bring their kids that need the feeding, but also then they stay for the other library programs that are being offered for those kids, like the summer reading. I mean, we would love to get to a point where we're at 100 to 200 a day, but I mean, that is pure guesswork because we've never done it before. How many -- what are the other sites? What are the other locations doing?
Well, the Boys and Girls Clubs, they have the kids that sign up that attend regularly. So we've got all the way from 80 kids at one place to 200 kids at another. So in a situation where we kind of have to guess at how many, we -- I mean, we really just take a stab in the dark. And so I think that the numbers that we've kind of come up with is about 75 kids, and just kind of starting with that, if the numbers increase, you know, obviously, we'll start sending more food. If the attendance is not that high, we'll just not, you know, send that much. So it'll -- I don't know. It's just, it's pretty tough to tell.
Yeah, and we're building it--
How long was the program last during the day? Was it an hour, two hours, three hours?
Yeah, like 11:30 to 1:30, like a two-hour window. And we're building library programming around that, where people would be coming anyway, we hope. The goal is to kind of combine those two programs to get the largest saturation and best impact for those kids.
John, excuse me. I'm sorry.
You know, the mission of these two programs are great. I absolutely agree with it, but combining the two missions together at the library gives me a little bit of concern. I mean, I'm not sure that that's what the county library system is for. I like when it goes to Boys and Girls Clubs and then various other places. Just there's something in me that's just a little concerned about it being a county project.
Commissioner, what are your concerns regarding that?
What could happen in the future, you know, once you start something like this?
Right.
And will it build and build until, you know, suddenly that library just becomes a place--
A feeding station? Sure, no.
And you know, the concept people would get, or the thought people would get in the county will be, "Wait, and I may not want to go to that library because, you know, it's for this group." And I don't know whether that all happened, but I can see that happening for certain.
Commissioner, would it help alleviate some of your concerns if we got the data from the other libraries in Texas that are similar in size?
I do need more information about how this is going to work.
Sure.
I mean, it's not -- you know, again, I think the missions of this deal, just exploring, you know, the food bank, you know, trying to do that, it's fine, but melding those two together and not having any kind of future ramifications, just concerns, especially with that library. And after touring it last week--
Sure.
I can see that happening in a very quick period of time.
And I'm sorry, I guess I'm confused when you say "that happening." What is exactly that?
Having the perception of that library, because as Judge Bradford said, that we have some people there that are just asking stuff.
I understand.
Frequent flyers, as the sheriff calls them.
I think that--
The other adding on top of this is that, you know, we started a food program, so it's the perception of the communities, it could become that that's all that is. You know, the building's not the greatest in the world, and I know we're going to, you know, do some stuff to fix it, but the perception in my world is this, oh, look, this is just not for everybody.
Right.
I'm trying to be, and I guess we got this--
No, that's fair. That's fair, and I think your observations are fair, Commissioner. Let me just tell you that from the moment that we've created the new library on the north side of town and the fact that we have the one downtown, I think that perception is not there anymore. I think the -- from the people that I talk to, the vast majority of people that attend that library are people that live, that are residents within precinct three, you know, because we live around it. And I can tell you that they're very excited, number one, that the library is open, knowing that it is downtown. I think it's a great opportunity for us to be able to partner with somebody like the West Texas Food Bank. Another thing is, on some of the things that we've been doing with education here in Midland lately, recently, I should say, programs like this, we don't have that many in Midland. And as a matter of fact, we're trying to encourage more people to have these type of programs. I wasn't aware that the library was even looking at something like this. This is the reason why I'm so excited, knowing that there are opportunities out there for us to be able to reach out to the kids, especially the ones that there's no summer programs for them. We have summer programs, and a lot of them fill up very quickly, and some of them are, you know, pretty pricey, where some of our kids are not able to attend. I think something like this, where we're opening up the doors for kids to come more often to our library, and I'm hoping that in the future, if they keep coming and that number grows, will they be able to see the library, and it'll encourage them to come to the library more often. That's why I'm excited about this program, because I think we'll have kiddos that usually are not used to coming to the library, are going to start showing up, and once they see the location, they'll continue. Kind of like the same idea that Midland College has the CMC. You know, the whole purpose of that was to have kids come, come look at the college, so that way, whenever they go back, they're not afraid of it. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to showcase, but I agree with you. I think there's a little bit more information that we need to receive, and I mean, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah, I'm hearing from the court that they like that idea in general, that they just like some more specifics. I can certainly work with Mr. Malm on the language of the agreement, and then we can get you the data of the other libraries in the state that are similar in size that have done this. The good thing about this program is we can bring it back this last court in May and still be ready to implement, because the West Texas Food Bank already has the infrastructure in there. I mean, we really just -- we need the approval, and I mean, we're ready to go as a site, as a host site, so.
Okay, let me add two other things to think about. The agreement has a 30-day get-out clause, which is what we always have, but it doesn't specify from when to when. So I would put some parameters as to dates, which in turn may, on the tail end, should it go forward, may or may not fit with the construction that's going to happen.
Yes, sir.
You're aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so maybe we can mesh them all together. We'll see.
John, will there be a member of the library staff or the part-time worker or the food bank--
Bless you.
-- that will limit this to a certain age? In other words, so if an adult walks in, they say, "Well, this isn't..." I mean, how will that work?
So, summer feeding is for kiddos 18 and under.
Okay.
And so it's the advertisement and the information that we put out to the community, it says that it's just for kids and teens.
So we just discreetly or politely tell the homeless people that come in, this is, you know, this is not your--
It's a summer feeding program for kids.
For kids, yes. Yeah, Commissioner, we--
Awesome.
I mean, we deal with those.
And when do you want -- about when did you want this to start?
June 5.
So we have another meeting in case--
Yes, sir.
--in case we need to--
Bring it back to court next--
More information or whatever?
Next court meeting in a minute.
So I'm hearing the same thing. If it's by agreement of the commissioners, we've got a cadre of questions, which I think can be answered. Would you want to table this till the next meeting then?
Yes.
All right, we've had a request to table. Is there an agreement to do that? Hearing nothing opposed, we'll table it, and then agenda is it bailey for next court. Okay? All right, but thank you for the innovation and ideas.
Sure.
I'm curious, other than Boys and Girls Clubs and the library perhaps participating, what other feeding centers do you--
We go to two low-income apartment sites and Odessa.
Okay.
No other places here, Bill?
No, the school district has a couple of sites at their schools, but as far as Midland County, it's the Boys and Girls Club, two locations, and then the library, hopefully.
Okay, all right. So is there a motion to table? Or we have general agreement? It's agreed? Okay. It is table. Number 12, Discuss Take Action on Library Donations, John.
You should have the backup. It's all material, no monetary.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Number 13, Discuss Take Action on Let's Nexus Advance Subscription Amendment for the District Attorney's Office. Laura--
Good morning.
Oh, well, hello. Good morning.
Laura's out of town, so I'm stepping in for her.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you. This is just our yearly renewal. There's no changes to it.
No changes monetarily?
No, they tried to, but--
Aye.
They agreed to keep it at the same cost.
Okay. Motion to approve? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Number 14, Discuss Take Action on Grade and Step Change for Personnel and Tax Office. Karen?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm just going to basically read you the letter that I sent you. This is a request for a grade increase for Darlene Rivera. Darlene was one of my employees that just finished this management program. Just for the sake of the others, Darlene started her employment with Midland County on November 4, 2014. She began as a motor vehicle clerk. On March 3, 2016, Darlene was promoted to motor vehicle lead clerk. Beginning today, Darlene is promoted to bookkeeper. Darlene has consistently been a team player with leadership skills. She is very efficient and conscientious in her work and maintains accuracy, which is an integral part of her job. She has consistently gone above and beyond in her work at the tax office. Entry level to the bookkeeping position is 14-1. Our past bookkeeper who just left was at a 14-2, and I'm asking that--
Pleasure.
--because of her work history and abilities, that she begin at the 14-2 as well, and this is in our budget.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
Immediately?
Yes, effective today. Yes, immediately.
Second. You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
I appreciate it very much.
Number 15, Acknowledge Midland County Sheriff's Office Monthly Fee. Sheriff?
You have before you the state required information to -- as to where the information, where the money has gone, what we've brought in. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer it.
Okay.
Motion to approve or acknowledge?
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 16, Discuss Take Action on Additional Funds for Postage for the Sheriff's Office.
We started out with around $32,000 in postage. We're down right now where we've got right just under $1,000. We're going to have a lot more before the year is out, and we would appreciate $10,000 to hopefully get us through closer to the end of the year.
Okay.
What costs that?
Mailouts. The blasted district clerk, he keeps sending stuff out, jury notices and stuff like that. I'm required to pay for that.
He's got a machine that churns out jury notices and by evidence of our attendance. There's a lot more of them.
Yeah, more people are showing up, and he's doing a great effort on it, but it does get the information out. We need it.
Request is $10,000. It would have to come out of contingency. I'm going to agree with you. You got a lot of extra notices.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Y'all agree that it should come out of contingency?
Yes, out of contingency.
On the second, Robin?
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number 17, Discuss Take Action Overtime Pay for ORCONX Extraction. Sheriff?
We have -- we started with about 5,855 files, booking files for inmates to be re-entered into Spillman after the deal with ORCONX. That's hard to do with the staff that we have without anything additional. What I'm asking for is the clerks to be allowed to work overtime and get paid overtime to get this information in. We're on a deadline. We're less than 30 days. I've got to get it in, or they're going to pull the plug and wipe the thing out. I don't want that to happen. We need to get this information in.
Okay, Sheriff, a couple of questions. One, could we create -- I'm not saying I know this as fact, but can we extend this out and solve both our crunch in time and this overtime, perhaps, if they would agree to more time?
It's not going to solve my overtime, because I'm still -- we still have people -- we're still booking 800 to 1,000 people every month.
Okay, are they booking every day or the--
Every day. I mean, we've got stuff going on 24 hours a day.
And the other thing, it has been mentioned that when we move that data back, are we moving the whole file? Are we doing screenshots, or how's it being moved back?
I'm hoping it's the whole file. I need that whole file.
Well, you and the DA both have to have that whole file.
That's correct.
And, okay. All right. Do you have overtime money? Any overtime money?
If I do, it's very little. It was cut pretty bad, if you remember.
I do remember.
Yes, sir.
Katzie?
Yeah, well, I looked at clerks' pay, and he's -- normally, our clerks are at about a grade 12, four, five, six steps, somewhere in there. They make 18, 19, maybe up to $27 an hour for our longest-term one. He's asking for 104 and a half hours. That's about $3,000. It's not extremely high.
Okay.
But I really needed to get this thing done under the timeline.
Of course, we could just continue to pay this overtime, just like we pay jailers overtime until they finish, and then look at the end of the year and see how it shakes out.
Where are we right now? We got the auditor shaking no on that.
We'd rather go ahead and have the amounts budgeted for. So if the court has allowed him to do this, go ahead and give him the money that's necessary, and then, of course, we look at it at the end of the year to make sure everything is good, but we'd rather go ahead and -- if he's needing that contingency funds, we'd rather go ahead and earmark it for that department.
Do we have a salary contingency fund that has those kind of--
We have a salary contingency fund, and it currently has $604,000 in it.
Right. Wouldn't that be a good source for this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it'd be the perfect choice.
He's currently spent about $410,000 in overtime.
Okay. No.
That's what they do right now, is bank comp time.
I'd go -- you say 3,000?
Yes, sir. About 3,000.
I'd make the motion--
Plus benefits, or does that include benefits? No, that doesn't include benefits. You have to add benefits to that.
Ooh, 20 seconds.
It's a -- I figured -- it just depends on who's working it. They may make $27 an hour. They may make 18. There's not -- we don't have a dollar number.
Well, let's allocate 4,000 and see what happens from there--
Thank you.
--from salary contingency.
Okay.
And--
I'll second.
I would like for Lieutenant McInahany to update her CGIS report, CJAC report, when they get in, because there's four months that are still out--
Correct.
--that have zeros on them.
Correct. We're waiting for this stuff to get in.
So is there a deadline and a period of time while I will stop doing that? Can I have that date?
Sheriff, the deadline you're up against is--
Well, the court is -- through the federal court has established 30 days, and they're going to pull -- get ORCONX completely off our system.
30 days from when? We don't know.
Last week?
No, I think it's 15th. Of this month or last month? No. It's the first or the 15th.
I thought it was the first.
Let's go with the first.
So putting a date of June 1st, is that what we're looking at?
If I were looking at, there may be the ability to have a further extension, but for today's action, use May the 1st, and let's look at 30 days.
I think that's right. I'm not sure.
I think--
Did no weeks.
It's somewhere between the 1st and the 15th, but--
104 and a half hours is all he said he needed.
Yeah, so I would set the deadline at June 15th.
Okay, and then go back to comp time like usual, June 15. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion. Does the second agree with how--
Yes.
--it's to be paid for? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And item 18, Discuss Take Action on Award for RFQ 17 MC 0519 Design and Build Services. This is for CS and CD to move them to more operative quarters.
Yes, sir. We received multiple responses. After much negotiations, we would like to award to MW Builders.
And Alan, do you want to get up here, please? And Allen, you want to get up here, please? You've reviewed the modified plans. Do they work for your operation?
Yes, sir. I've been involved in it, and they, they look good for what we need.
Couple of other things. Have I missed it? But where's the completion on this?
73 of 17. Second page, Judge?
Building permit complete?
Yes.
No, that's building permit on the 3rd. Mark, where are you?
And then substantial completion is on March of 18.
How long is it going to take to bill this? Everybody come up to the microphone.
Aaron. Aaron Holsher with MW Builders.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What we're looking at, substantial completion on March 2nd, 2018, to finish the design, move into construction, and permitting is what-
Can you do better on that date?
There's a chance.
We're six weeks behind now.
Six weeks behind, so you're needing it February.
It, it was targeted, when it was put out, it was targeted for year end.
Mm-hmm. I feel that we're a little further in design than actually a conceptual design. We actually went a little further to make sure that everything was handled with their needs. I think we can. Really, all of this depends on permitting with the city. That's sort of-
We can help you permitting, but it's essentially a steel building.
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
We need to, if you can get that date back into-
Yes, sir.
Some reasonable number right after the 1st of the year.
Okay. If we can move forward right away, I think we can make it.
Yeah, because there's other things, everybody's waiting on him.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Now, it is 2.7, and that's just a couple hundred thousand over what it was budgeted for, but there's money available in another project which we're saving by converting the library. So we're okay on the price. I'd make the motion that we award this RFQ to MW Builders. Okay. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. And if we can get together after this and kind of hone in on those dates along with Allen. Okay? Good. Thank you, Kristi. Yeah. Okay, 19, discuss take action on the resident county judge to sign a RECO lease agreement.
Yes, sir. This is a budgeted item. Broad and Bridge was up for renewal. They are going with a 36-month lease for $163.27 per month.
Okay.
And that stays about the same because they had a RECO before.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. No motion? Is there a second? There is. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 20, discuss take action on the resident county judge to sign AT&amp;T agreement. Justin?
Aye.
Kind of like right on cue, you walk in, he hands you the script.
Coffee was calling my name right at the last minute. Okay, so it's kind of awkward coming up here telling you this, but trying to get some money back to the county this time instead of asking for some.
Nice.
Not much, but if y'all, I kind of want to go through a quick little spiel, but if y'all remember a few months ago, I came to y'all asking to use CRW Consulting for some E-rate money. It was because AT&amp;T came out last year saying they're upgrading their equipment, basically raising our prices is all they were doing. Our contract was expiring the end of this year, and we were able to get all of our sites on the house bill, which brought our prices way down for many years. CRW filed our E-rate 470 for our libraries and even our non-E-ratable sites for the rest of the sites. Five companies responded to that 470, and after the process was done, AT&amp;T was very, very aggressive, and so they're pretty much the company we have chosen to stay with. To give you an idea, the next in line to AT&amp;T was $103,000 more than what AT&amp;T's contract was. In the years 5 through 10, for that same company was $624,000, which was, $624,000 The current provider, AT&amp;T, currently costs us $4,000 a month, which is roughly $48,000 a year. The total new cost for a 10-year contract, the effort to 3, 5, and 10, would be a flat $5,500 per month, which comes out to $66,000 per year, will increase by about $17,000. Our speed at the annex will be increased by about 10 times in this package. With this current setup and a 10-year contract, we'll receive $9,600 from the E-rate program if we continue to file the paperwork. Our consultant is costing us $4,500 a year, so he'll give us about $5,000 back every year. This would have really paid off if AT&amp;T wouldn't have come to the ballgame, and we would have had a lot higher pricing, which would probably be at $20,000 or $30,000 per year. But I'm glad they came, saves us the headache. No provider is going to call and ask us to save money. It's partly due to the fact that the fiber exists, and they have lower costs is why AT&amp;T is able to offer this pricing. I priced out running our own fiber at one point. Total cost was about a one and a half million. It'd take us at least 10 years to see a return, not to include the optics to light it up or possible unexpected construction. Mike and I agree that because of this price break, all the other factors, we're trying to secure this pricing for as long as possible, and that's why we're asking for you to authorize county judge to sign a 10-year agreement with AT&amp;T.
Wow, sounds good.
10-year agreement, Russell?
Yes. I sent it to you last week.
Oh, was that?
That was one of them I sent you.
Oh, that was going to be for the next.
It was for the next court, and then I sent you another one.
Okay. I've not seen it yet, Judge. If it's 10-year agreement, does it need to have language that allows us to get out of it every year?
Okay. I'd make the motion that we authorize the county judge to sign the AT&amp;T agreement, subject to Russell's approval of the language. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 21, discuss take action, it should be on auxiliary courtroom AV, Jason. That's this courtroom.
Now, I need to ask for a little bit of money, quite a bit. Last court, I came to you asking to go out to RFP for all the other courtrooms. Would like to use the same company, so basically I went back and got the numbers what we're using in the other courtrooms, and looked at our budget. We don't really have any money. Also, I would like to, because we're upgrading everything, change the way through the cameras and recording to be able to livestream and other things a little more efficiently than we're doing now. The total costs, I'm kind of just ballparking it, trying to put a placeholder because I'm not sure, but based off everything that I've got, I'd like to placehold about $90,000. Almost possibly it'll be a little less, but at least we could reserve that amount. As part of this bid process, I would bid that.
And that's, that's to make this courtroom more compliant with what we're having to do.
Basically, what we'll do is we'll basically get rid of that capet over there, and we'll upgrade all the recording devices, the cameras, the audio. We will have HDMI, VGA, all the latest connections. We'll take the processor, move it out of this room. Yeah.
What are you going to do with the cameras?
Basically, we have cameras on the ceiling right now. We basically bought an interview room system to record the court, but because of this condition that we're in right now, we are unable to configure it. The cameras I'm proposing put in would basically connect to a encoder. We could livestream on the internet while court's going on. Also, it also provides us the avenue to have a third party monitor the service and upload the videos, produce those for us, as well as if we want to go the extent of displaying on the screen the person's name that's coming up to speak. I would like to-
Wow.
Basically, go out to bid, and then bring those options back to the court and see what y'all would like to do.
Okay. I am supportive personally of what Justin's asking because we continue to get pounded at the legislature about, well, why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing this? And we're, we're in a bracketed population, which we, right now we meet, but it'll be questionable that we meet it after the session. So if you start this, I think as described to me, it will exceed what we're going to be requiring to do coming up.
Audio-wise, everybody be happy, and I've talked to several of the counties, and this is kind of on par with what several other people are doing too.
The only question that I have, everything sounds good, I'm real supportive. Regarding the camera, is there going to be an easy way for us to be able to turn it on and turn it off, you know, every time we've got to do that?
Yes, there'd be a very easy way to do that. As a matter of fact, if we go with the service I'm looking and going with, they'll just turn it on and monitor it for us. We'll pay them based off of how many meetings we have per year. They will watch the meeting, zoom in on the people talking, put this, play their name on the screen, upload the video, separate of our internet connection, and produce a video for us.
Does that move the liability for the meeting to them and takes it away from us? Because we'll have a special meeting now and then, and-
The meeting would still be, I believe, on our-
Okay.
We'll still be liable, but we'll be going in contract with them to produce this.
Okay.
And after talking to several of the counties, this is what everybody else is doing, and I think it's a good fit because it's kind of a specialized field.
Okay. And this is not budged to do something that's evolved over this session, and so it's a contingency item, best I can tell, because I don't think you have any money.
No, sir.
Like to make a motion to approve $90,000 for the auxiliary courtroom AV, coming out of contingency.
Okay. Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you, Justin. Discuss take action donating, 22. Discuss take action donating surplus used fence to 4H. And this is an age-old item. Years ago, the court declared the fencing in the old corral outside of the extension service as surplus, and it was going to get taken down, and it's still up and nothing's happened.
That's correct.
And?
We've been through several 4H leaders since then, and Jeff is very excited about taking the fencing down. He has some other uses for the corral area. He'd like to put in a garden area, 4H garden area, display garden, a teaching garden in that area. This would make it more user-friendly. I studied what it would cost the county, you know, what, Ernie and I looked at what it would cost the county, well, not actually what it would cost, what it would take the county to take it down, and it would take my guys probably four days, four people to do it all day long. At that rate, we would lose money by taking the fencing to the recycle. It would cost us more money than we could make on the fencing. So came up with the idea of allowing the 4H fathers to come in, use their equipment to take the fence down, and they can take it and sell it, and then put the money back in the 4H coffers. And the auditor, the attorney's fine with that. I don't know what the auditor is, but, you know, I'm trying to save the county money. That's a strange thing.
And it's, as it sits right now, it's just giving us more of a problem because it's rusting and getting still playing around.
It is, it's unsafe. The buildings we looked at, we're going to be able to, the building that's up on the, up in the air, Ernie and I looked at it, and we will take it down and dispose of the building so that they don't have to worry with any of the 4H parents messing with that. We'll use the big front-end loader with the forks and pick it up off the building, pick it up off its foundation, which is about six feet, seven feet in the air pipe, and get the building out of the way, then they can come in and just take all the fencing down, and then take all the pipe up and cut it up in pieces and haul it off.
And the group is certainly willing to sign a non-release liability to go get it.
Yes, they're excited about this.
Russell Mall, Midland County Auditor? The motion needs to include two findings. One, that it serves a public purpose, and two, the, as Tim had mentioned, a finding that it would cost us more to dispose of it than to give it to them, which is the benefit that we receive.
Okay. Anything? All right. Any other comments? If not, what's- I'd like to make the motion that we donate surplus equipment used fencing to 4H because the cost for us to dispose of it would be more costly than the donation, and-
Serves a public purpose.
And the public purpose is to, to support the 4H.
And it'd make the area safer.
And make the area a lot safer and cleaner. And your motion is contingent upon them signing a release? Yes. Okay. Contingent upon a release execution. Okay. Any questions or seconds or discussions? Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes.
A side note while we're talking about the 4H area. The extension office got new flooring last week, and they're very excited. If you guys would like to go out and look at it, they're really proud of it. It really made the place look nice.
Good. And 23, discuss take action on development and subdivision rules for Midland County.
I don't have to take a leave yet, Judge.
Okay. 24, discuss take action on fleet accidents.
Got four to report for court today. First one being unit 50139. It's facilities unit. The accident happened on 5/2 of 17. It was a not-at-fault accident. We've already contacted the other insurance company, and they are in the process of fixing the vehicle already. We had a slight incident out at busting for badges between one of the four-wheeler carts that was out there owned by risk manager, or emergency management, and CID vehicle. It was about $300 in damages. We're going to take care of that in-house. We also had CIU unit 15485. It was an at-fault accident, struck a citizen's car in the parking lot. Repair to ours is about 800. We're going to take care of that in-house with Vector. The repairs to the citizen's car is going to be anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000. We're in the process of getting that fixed as of this morning. Unit number 15904 and unit number 15443, both involved in the same accident with each other back on 4/27. Was an at-fault accident. We repaired 15334 in-house with extra parts that we had off of an auction vehicle, so it's back off and running at 15904. It's been at the body shop, being looked at. They're flying in a specialist this morning to look at it that deals with police vehicles of this sort to see whether it's going to be a total or not.
Of this sort?
It's the Explorers. It's the new Explorers that we had bought a bunch of. With the frame, with the way the frames are on that, the adjuster has not dealt with that before, so you want to bring somebody in that was a specialist on that. So that one, it looks like it's probably going to go ahead and be a total on it, and I would ask the court's permission, contingent on it being a total, to go ahead and approve replacement of that one with a new vehicle.
Okay.
And that's it.
Heard the request. Conversations, discussions, motions. Think the, I'd like to wait on replacement of that vehicle until we got a report back.
Yeah, we'll find out later on this morning.
Okay.
On that one.
We need to acknowledge or approve? You can just acknowledge with the caveat that you asked for. I'll just acknowledge the report and ask for the report back on that one.
Okay. Bring it back to next court on that one for replacement.
Okay.
No problem. Thank you.
And if the minutes will reflect which one he's bringing back, please. All right, that's, that's agreement by the court, I guess. They're silent. Y'all agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. No action to be taken.
No action, okay.
All right. Okay, 25, acknowledge the quarterly sick leave pool report.
Yes, sir, you should have, have one in your packet. We did have donations, but unfortunately we had quite a few withdrawals this quarter also, leaving our ending balance at 4,0454 and change.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 26, acknowledge the quarterly investment report.
Yes, sir, you should have those. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 27, take action acknowledging personnel memorandum.
Yes, sir, there's nothing out of the ordinary. The overtime you see at the bottom is all approved, some for pre-trial, some for the DA's office that they pay for out of their PTI account.
Okay.
Motion to acknowledge.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Excuse me. 28, discuss take action on budget line item transfer.
Russell, you want to take this one?
I do have some to bring to your attention this morning.
Okay.
Line item transfer number 4775 on page 1 of 22, only because it is moving money out of the combined district courts budget and 318th budget to move into court-appointed attorneys in the 318th budget. I do have page 10 of 22, line item transfer number 5276, and because it is moving money out of juvenile detention and into juvenile probation, $500 for education demo supplies. Line item transfer 11 of 22, line item transfer 5366. This is the one that is moving money for that employee that John T. was talking about. If we can table this one, take this one out and we'll bring it back to the court. Russell and I had something to discuss in regards to it.
What was the number?
5366, page 11 of 22.
18.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll, if we'll take that one out for us, please, and that's all I have on line item transfers.
Motion to approve all item transfers with the exception of page 11 of 22 for the summer food program employee.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 29, discuss take action on bill of wire transfers.
I do have some wire transfers for the county clerk's office, deposit in general pulled cash account in error. And I think the IRS issue got fixed, but this was something a little bit different for $11.25. As far as the veils are concerned, I do have one exception and it's for Mr. Key Locke Smith from the sheriff's office in the amount of $50. Explanation provided indicates, they had indicated to an officer to go purchase some keys for Locke Fox at Midland Lock &amp; Safe and he went to Mr. Key. Midland Lock &amp; Safe, they did have a PO for Mr. Key, they did not, so they're asking for an exception to get this bill paid for.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Any questions, discussions, or motions?
Motion to pay all bills and wire transfers.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. 30, take action on submitted application to permit used county right-of-way utility line installation driveway construction by private construction precinct 1.
1.
Precinct 2.
Wow.
I've got 10 and then I've got one, Felipe, I'd like for one explanation on this Parsley deal. You've got, that's the, that's the one on County Road 120 and where they're doing that driveway into Pipe Yard, it says it's temporary.
Yeah, that's the one that-
Isn't that, isn't that where we were trying to push it over onto?
La Mesa Road, 1180.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to hold that, talk to them or?
Yeah, because the way we discussed it, they said that 120 is going to be temporary until they get the 1180 on. I would like to actually hold it, have another meeting.
Let's hold it until we get a plan, a different plan.
And if they use the word temporary, put a date on temporary.
Who is this again?
Parsley Energy.
Oh, Parsley, okay.
Okay, so you've got 10.
I've got 10.
All right. Precinct 3.
Precinct 4.
Make a motion to approve all these.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you. We do have three different executive session items. Executive session pursuant to Texas government code 551.071 to consult with county attorney regarding pending perspicacious litigation, other matters. 32, conduct executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.074 to discuss personnel matters. 33, conduct executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.072 to deliver repurchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Let's take a five-minute break and then go forward and we're back from executive sessions, 1120 by mile watches. Are any action to be taken from executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes.
I thought it was-